Hare Rama, Hare Rama, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, Sudhandad Pranam to all the devotees, thank you all for joining in for our study session this afternoon. We'll start with prayers. Om Ajnana Timindasya Jnana Janashala Khaya. Chakshurun Militam Yena Tasmai Sri Gurave Namaha. Sri Chaitanya Manobishtham. Stapi Tam Yena Bhutale Swayam Rupak Ramaiyam. Dadati Swarapadantikam. Vandeham Sri Guru Sri Utapadakamalam. Sri Guruun Vaishnavam. Sri Rupam Sagrajatam Sahagna Raguna Khanvitam Tamsajeevam. Saadvaitam Savadotam Parijana Sahitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam. Sri Radha Krishna Padan Sahagna Lalita Sri Vishakhanvitam. Namom Vishnu Padhaya Krishna Praeshraya Bhutale. Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Nirjinaaminen. Namastey Saraswade Devay Gauravani Pracharinen. Nirmeseesh Shunyavadi Paschatyade Shatarien. Namom Mahavadanyaya Krishna Prema Pradhayate. Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanya Namne Gauradushinamaha. Panchatatva Atmakam Krishnam Bhakta Rupa Swarupakam. Bhakta Vataram Bhakta Kyam Namami Bhakta Shaktikam. He Krishna Karuna Sindho Dina Bandho Jagatpate. Gopisha Gopika Kanta Radha Kanta Namusute. Tapta Kanchana Gaurangi Radhe Vrindavaneshwari. Vishwamanusute Devi Pranamami Hari Priyem. Vancha Kalpatarubyascha Kripasindrubya Evacha. Patitana Pavanebhyo Vaishnavebhyo Namum Namaha. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nitya Ananda. Sri Advaitakadha Adhrav. Shri Vasadi Gauravaktavinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, 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 Hare, Hare. Gurave Gaurachandraaya Radhikaaya Traliye. Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaaya Tatbhaktaaya Namum Namaha. Mukam Karoti Vachalam Pangumlangayate Girimyat Prabhathamam Vandeh. Sri Guruun Dinatarinam Paramanandamadavam. Sri Krishna Chaitanya Miesvaram Hari Om. Hare Krishna, Sudhandad Pranam to all the devotees, thank you all for joining in. Let's start with Vagavag Gita. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Hare Krishna, so we are on chapter number four, we will seeing this transcendental knowledge that actually Krishna is giving to Arjuna. Right, what is this transcendental knowledge, the knowledge which can enable one to transcend the three modes of material nature and go back to that Dham. Having gone there when no one returns, when no one has to return to this material world. Right, so in this particular transcendental knowledge Krishna speaks about importance of the Guru Parampara. How it is important to receive the knowledge in a bona fide discipleship succession. And then Krishna goes on to speak about, you know, his appearance, what are the reasons for his appearance. Right, the two verses, very famous verses wherein Krishna says that too, whenever there is a decline in religious practice and whenever there is a rise of a religion, that time I appear. And then Krishna also says that to protect the pious and to annihilate the miscreants, I will, I appear millennium after millennium. So like that Krishna gives the reasons and then Krishna also says. Janmakarma Chamidhyam Evam Yo Vethi Tatvataha. Chaktvadeham Kunar Janmanathiti Mamiki So Arjuna. Anyone who understands the transcendental nature of my appearance and my activities will not come back to this material world after they quit with the body. And then finally, in the last verse that we did yesterday, which is ten point ten, Krishna talks about Veeta Raga Bhaya Kroda. Ah Veeta Raga Bhaya Kroda means, you should want to be freed, Veeta means to be freed from Raga, Bhaya and Kroda. That means from attachment, from fear and anger. And then Manmaya Maam Upashutataha, that means one who is fully situated in remembrance of me. Bahvo Jnana Tapasa Uta Madbhagam Agataha. Such a person who is purified by my remembrance will attain transcendental love for me, that's what we saw. And wherein Prabhupada gives a very beautiful purport where he is talking about the nine stages of devotional service. Right from Shraddha to Krishna Prema, right, and it all, the evolution from one stage to the other always happens in the association of those devotees who are already in that particular stage. Right, if you associate with the devotee who is very much interested in chanting or driving disenchanted, automatically our enthusiasm to chant also will increase like that. Okay, so let's go ahead, ten point eleven. This is a very wonderful verse, this is talking about the proportion, okay, our proportion, the proportion of mercy that we receive from the Lord is equal to the proportion of our surrender. That's what is given here, so we'll request Shridhar Prabhu, please go ahead Prabhu.
Hare Krishna, Dandad Pranam, Mahatji.
Hare Krishna, Dandad Pranam, yes.
E Yada Maam Prabadyanke Tamstadayiva Pajamyaham. Mama Vartamam Vartante Malixya Parta Sarvasa Sarvashagam. Ya All Who Yata As Maam Untum Me Prabadyante Surrender Tan. Them Tada So Eva Certainly Pajami Reward Aham I Mama My Vartamam. Path Avartante Follow Manushya All Men Parta Ho San Pritha Sarvashagam In All Respect. Hare Krishna, Dandad Pranam, translation. As all surrender unto me, I reward them accordingly, everyone follow my path in all respect, Ho San Pritha, Hare Krishna. Perpetual, everyone is searching for Krishna in different, in different aspect of his manifestation. Krishna, the supreme personality of Godhead is partially realized in his impersonal Brahma Jodhi Efligent and as all preventing super soul dwelling within everything, including the particle of atom. But Krishna is fully realized only by his pure devotees. Consequently Krishna is object of everyone's realization and thus anyone and here and everyone is satisfied according to one's desire to have him. In the transcendental world also Krishna reciprocate with his pure devotees in the transcendental attitude just as the devotee wants him. One devotee may want Krishna as supreme master, another as his personal friend, another as his son and still another as his lover. Krishna reward all the devotees equally according to the different intensities of love for him. In the material world, the same reciprocation of feeling are there and they are equally exchanged by the Lord with a different. With a different type of worshipers, the pure devotee both here and in the transcendental about associate with him in person and are able to render personal service to the Lord and thus derive transcendental bliss in his loving service as. As for those who are impersonal, impersonalities, impersonalist and who want to commit spiritual suicide by unhealing in individual existence of the living entity. Krishna help also observing them into, into his efligence. Such impersonalities do not agree to accept the eternal blissful also personality of Godhead. Consequently, they cannot release and bliss of transcendental personal service to the Lord. Having extinguished their individuality, some of them who are not firmly situated even in the impersonal existence. Return to the material field to exhibit their dormant desires for activities. They are not admitted into spiritual planet but they are again given a chance to act on the material planet. For those who are productive workers, the Lord awards the desired result to the prescribed duties as the, as the Ajneshvara. Ajneshvara and those who are yogis seeking mercy power are awarded such power. In other words, everyone is dependent on success upon his mercy alone and all kinds of spiritual processes and but different degree of success on the same path. Unless therefore one come to the highest perfection of Krishna consciousness, all attempt remain imperfect as stated in the Shribhad Bhagavatam. Kaama Sarva Kaama Ho Gava. Kaama Sarva Kaama Ho Gava. Moksha Kaama Utharadi Di Ureena Bhakti Yogene Naja Te Purusham Param. Wherever one is without desire, the condition of devotee or is desirous all fruitful result or is there liberation, after liberation, one should with all the effort. All the efforts try to worship the supreme personality of Godhead for complete perfection cumulating in Krishna consciousness. Hare Krishna, Dandad Pranam, Mahatji.
Hare Krishna, thank you, thank you. So very beautifully in these words, at least in the purport, Prabhupada is actually telling who is the highest bhakta of Lord Krishna, right? With Vadanti Tatvavidas Tatvam Yajnana Madvayam Brahmiti Paramatmeti Bhagavaniti Shabdhit. So when we are trying to merge with the efligence of the Lord, then we are losing our personal identity. In that situation, it is said to be spiritual suicide, that's why Prabhupada calls it as the last snare of Maya. Right, that means even at the point of liberation, that means we are liberated from the material body with the, with the, with the mysteries that are caused due to the material body. But yet we are not even there in the spiritual platform, right, it is like trishanku, nah, in between you are hovering in between where you neither in the spiritual world nor in the material world. Right, you don't have a material body but you don't even have a spiritual body, right, you are just merging in some light which will not give you bliss, right? So in that way, Prabhupada is saying that is the last snare of Maya. However, if one meets a devotee and associates with such a devotee, then automatically he can be moved or he will have, he can advance from the stage of impersonalism to the stage of paramatma realization. And finally to the realization of the supreme personality of Godhead, that's why the word Yajita Purusham Param. Purusham means, you know, purusham means a person who is having senses, right? Purusha, purusha means he is enjoying the prakriti, right, and purusham param, we are all purushas in some extent, right? We have some control over at least what we cook, what we eat, what dress I want to wear, etc., etc., we have some kind of control. But we are not ultimately the controller, isn't it? So in that way, we need to worship the supreme lord who is purusham param. He is the supreme personality of Godhead and whether or not whatever desire we have, right, Prabhupada says in the purport, actually this is from Anictra devotion. Wherein Prabhupada says that whatever desire we have, right, we should ask the supreme personality of Godhead for the fulfillment of the desire. If the desire is, will not take us away from Krishna, then Krishna will actually satisfy that desire. That is why whether or not whatever desire we have, we should ask only the supreme lord about it, we should not be asking any of the devatas. Why, because last time only we saw, the devatas are bound to give us, if we worship them according to the karmakanda philosophy, right, the vedic scriptures which are there for the tamogun, tamogunis and the rojogunis. Right, for them, you know, there are certain pristhat things which are given, if we go after that, then the remigals will be satisfied and we have to, we have to get those things which we want. But those things may not necessarily be good for us, right, they may actually push us more into the depths of passion and ignorance, right? So that is why it is always advised to worship the supreme lord, whatever desires we may have. Text number twelve, Vishwanukanya Mahatji, go ahead. Mahatji, you don't unmute yourself. Kankshatah Karma Nam Siddhim, yes, Mahatji, go ahead.
Kankshatah Karma Nam Siddhim Yajantam Iha Devata Khipram Hi Manusheloke Siddhir Bhavati Karmaja. Synonyms. Kankshatah Desiring Karma Karma Nam Or Fruitivity Of Fruitivity Activities. Siddhim Perfection Yajante Worship By Sacrifice. Iha In The Material World Devatah Thademi Gods. Khipram. Khipram Very Quickly High Certainly. He is certainly monster in human society. Low, locate within this world. Siddhim Success, Success Bhavati Comes Karmaja From Fruitivity Work. Men in this world desire success in fruitivity activities and therefore they worship the demi gods quickly. Of course, men get results from fruitivity work in this world. Perpetual, this is a great misconception about the gods or demi gods of this material world and men of less intelligence although passing as great caller. Take these demi gods to be various form of the supreme lord, actually the demi gods are not different from forms of god but they are gods different parts and parcels. God is one and the parts and parcels are many. The Vedas say is Nityo Nityaham, god is one. Ishvara Paramah Krishna Krishna. The supreme lord is one Krishna and the demi gods are delegated with powers of manage this material world. These demi gods are all living entities with different, different grades of material powers. They cannot be equal to supreme god Narayana, Vishnu or Krishna. Anyone who thinks that god and the demi god are on the same level is called an atheist or pasandi.
Ashandi.
Ashandi, even the great demi gods like Brahma and Shiva cannot be compared to the supreme lord. In fact, the lord is worshipped by demi gods like Brahma and Shiva cannot to be compared to the supreme lord. In fact, the lord is worshipped by demi gods such as Brahma and Shiva. Shiva Vi Nisi Nutam, Vi Nici Nutam. Yet curiously enough, there are many human leaders who are worshipped by foolish men under the misunderstanding and.
Of anthropomorphism.
Anthropomorphism or sumor, sumorphism. The Iha Devataha, he notes a powerful man or demi god of this material world. But Narayana, Vishnu or Krishna, the supreme personality of Godhead does not belong to this world, is above all transcendental to material creation. Even Sri Padha Shankaracharya, the leader of the impersonalist maintains that Narayana or Krishna is beyond, is the.
Beyond the material creation.
Ah, to my. Material creation, however foolish people, Rita Janana.
Rita Jnana.
Rita Jnana worship the demi god because they want immediate result, they get the result but do not know the results so obtained are temporary. And are meant or less intelligent persons, the intelligent person is in conscious consciousness and he has no need to worship the paltry demi gods for some immediate temporary benefit. The demi god of this material world as well as their worshippers will vanish with annihilation, annihilation of this material world. The bones of the demi gods are material and temporary, both the material worlds and their inhabitants including the demi gods and their worshippers are bubbled in the cosmic ocean in this world. However, human society is made after temporary things such as the material opulence of possessing land, family and enjoyable, enjoyable per, perf- perfunalia. To achieve such temporary things, people worship the demi god for a person in human society. If a man gets some, you know, some ministership in the government by worshiping a political leader, he considers that he has achieved a great boon. All of them are therefore no, not doing, not doing to the so-called leaders or big guns in order to achieve temporary boons. And they indeed achieve such things, such foolish men are not interested in Krishna consciousness for the permanent solution to the hardship of material existence. They are all after science enjoyment and to get a little facility for science enjoyment. They are attracted to worshiping empowered living entities known as the demi gods. This was indicated that people are rarely interested in Krishna consciousness, they are mostly interested in material enjoyment and therefore they worship some powerful living.
Thank you so much, Mahatji, Hare Krishna. Hare God, so, so actually those who are less intelligent, right? This mentioned that those who are less intelligent, they don't know the actual purpose of life, right? So they settle for small, small things, right? You know, there is a, there is a saying, you know, when, when you can get, you know, nice gold coins, right? Why should we go and ask for stones, right, when somebody is capable of giving us gold coins, so much of riches? But we go and ask them, just, just give us some stones, right, it is like that, right? The lord can give us the ultimate benediction of loving devotional service which can enter, which can make our hearts be joyful and blissful, right? But we don't, we don't want such kind of bliss in our heart, rather what we want, we want hard work, right? There was one lady who was actually, you know, carrying, carrying a big burden of pots on her head, right? At that time Krishna appeared in front of her, right, Krishna appeared in front of her and asked her, okay, what do you want? Nah, but then immediately what did she say? Ah, please can you, and that pot actually fell down because of the, because of that heavy weight, she really carried two, three pots on a line like that. Right, the pot actually fell down and then when Krishna came and asked this lady, right? What is it, I am the supreme lord, what is it the benediction that you want? What did she ask, can you please put the pots back on my head, that's what she asked. Because her, she is so short sighted in her, in her way and in her work, that she simply wants to complete that particular work. That she has to carry those three pots which contains whatever, to her own place from the river to her home, right? So even if there is, you know, a great fortune that is coming up in the way, right, we are so short sighted, we are not able to see. You only want to say that, you know, just put the pot back on my head because we are so used to unnecessarily laboring hard for nothing, right? Similarly, when we are chanting Hare Krishna Mantra, sometimes we ask for, you know, a good job or an increment in the salary or a promotion, etc. Ah, that is like asking, going to a king and asking him for some stones, right? Whereas the king can actually give us, you know, much, much more, right? If you just leave it to the king, give me best thing whatever you have, probably the king will give, give us the best, right? Probably he will give us diamonds and rubies, but if you go and ask the king for a stone, he will only give us a stone, isn't it? So similarly, when we are praying to the lord, even when we have desires, we can pray to the lord and whatever is necessary for me to advance in bhakti, no Krishna, please give me that, right? In that way, we will be eternally happy and always being engaged in devotional service like that. Yeah, so we should be very careful, especially it is said during Brahmanurtha time, whatever desires we have Krishna will fulfill it. When we are chanting especially, we should be very careful what, what is the desire that is going on in our mind because those things may get fulfilled and those may be just some thoughts going here and there, right? Whatever we contemplate over a long time, those actually become our thoughts and then it will become our words, then it will become our action, then it will become our habits, right? So we should be very careful what we are desiring and how, you know, how and if somebody gives us a boon, we should be ready, right? Rather than not ask for more, you know, labor or, you know, burden of this material world, we should ask, we should be very careful what we are desiring and what we are asking for. Okay, the next verse is a very, very famous verse, right, the four kinds of people who actually, I'm sorry, the four kinds of varna and ashrama. Krishna says, I have designed this varna and ashrama system and by this one is actually able to go back from back to Godhead like that. Okay, Sudha Mahatji, go ahead, Chaturvarnam Mayashristam.
Hare Krishna, Mahatji, Dandad Pranam.
Hare Krishna, Dandad Pranam.
Chaturvarnam Mayashristam Bunna Karma Vibhagashahta Tasya Kartaram Apima Vidya Kartaram Avyayam. Trans, sinanans, chaturvarnam, the four divisions of human society. Maya, vaymi, shristam, related, guna of quality, karma and work, vibhagashahta in terms of division. Tasya of that, kartaram the father, api although, maam may, vidju maino, a kartaram as the non-doer, avyayam unchangeable. Translation and performed by Zivan Greschele Prabhupada, Chele Prabhupada Kirjay. According to the three modes of material nature and the work associated with them, the four divisions of human society are created by me. And although I am the creator of this system, you should know that I am yet a non-doer, me unchangeable. Perpetual, the lord is the creator of everything, everything is wall of him, everything is sustained by him and everything after annihilation rests in him. He is therefore the creator of the four divisions of social order, beginning with the intelligent class of men technically called Brahmanas due to their being situated in the mode of goodness. Next is the administrative class technically called the Shaktrias due to their being situated in the mode of passion. The mercantile men called the Vaishyas are situated in the mixed modes of passion and ignorance and the Shudras or laborer class are situated in the ignorant mode of material nature. In spite of his creating the four divisions of human society, Lord Krishna does not belong to any of these divisions because he is not one of the conditioned souls, a section of whom form human society. Human society is similar to any other animal society, but to elevate men from the animal status, the above mentioned divisions are created by the law for the systematic development of Krishna consciousness. The tendency of a particular man toward work is determined by the boards of material nature which he has acquired. Such symptoms of life according to the different modes of material nature are described in the eighteenth chapter of this book. A person in Krishna consciousness however is above even the Brahmanas. Although Brahmanas by quality are supposed to know about Brahman, the supreme absolute truth, most of, most of them. Ah, ah, most of them approach only the impersonal Brahman manifestation of Lord Krishna. But a man who transcends the limited knowledge of a Brahmana and reaches the knowledge of the supreme personality of Godhead, Lord Sri Krishna becomes a person in Krishna consciousness or in other words a Vaishnav. Krishna consciousness includes knowledge of all different culinary expansions of Krishna, namely Rama, Nissima, Varaha, etc. And as Krishna is transcendental to the system of the four divisions of human society, a person in Krishna consciousness is also transcendental to all divisions of human society. Whether we consider the divisions of community, nation or species. Thank you, Mahatji, Hare Krishna.
Thank you, yeah, so Brahman Janati Iti Brahmana, what is the nature of a Brahmana, definition of a Brahmana? Is that he should have understood the essential principles of the absolute truth, Brahman Janati Iti Brahmana, right? If he does not understand what is Brahman, what is paramatma, what is Bhagavan, right? That is the, he does not understand the supreme personality of Godhead, then he cannot be called as a Brahmana, he will be called as a Brahman Bandhu, right? A relative of a Brahmana or a valgition of the Brahmana or a friend of the Brahmana, right? So, so in this case, Prabhupada actually mentions one more very important point here. Krishna is not within the four, Chaturvarnam, right? The Brahman, Shaktaya, Vaishya, Shudra, Brahmacari, Krestha, Vanaprasta, Sanyasi, right? Krishna is not part of this Chaturvarnam, although he has created these four divisions of human society, why? Because these are according to the modes that one has acquired, if one is Satvik, if one has good taste for studying of the vedic scriptures, then what happens? He will become, he will, you know, he will become learned in the vedic scriptures, not only he will learn but he will also teach the vedic scriptures to others. In this way he will be situated in the Satvik platform and he will be called a Brahmana, right? Especially those who have this protective mentality, right, I have to protect all the people who are, who are with me, etc. They are all having Shaktaya personalities, that means they want to protect a certain class of people. So those are called Shaktaya class and then you have the Vaishya class who are dealing with cow products, who are dealing with, you know, agriculture, farming, etc. They are all Vaishyas and then you have the Shudras who are simply serving the other three classes in terms of just doing some manual labor. Hmm, and, and all these four are according to their guna, the highest is the Brahmana who is situated in the Satvik platform. The Shaktaya is actually a combination of Brahmana and Shaktaya, I mean, sorry, goodness and passion, right? But more of passion than goodness, that is Shaktaya. And then Vaishya is more of a combination between passion and ignorance, that means more of passion and less of ignorance. Whereas this Shudra is a combination of passion and ignorance wherein ignorance is much higher and passion is slightly less, right? That is why most of the time Shudras have a doubt what to do, what not to do, how to do, what, what, what I should not. That is why most of the time Sudras have a doubt what to do, what not to do, how to do, what, what, what I should not do at this time like that. So much of queries are there because we are so much situated in the tamoguna. That's why we always say, right, when our eyes are closed, hmm, like the other day we were talking about this example, right? We are going inside a dark room and then there are some glass pieces in the dark room. We go inside and we walk across and then we, our legs start bleeding because there are pieces of glass which have gone into our, the soul of our feet and it is bleeding. So it is the, is it the, is it the mistake of the place or is it the mistake of the glass pieces that they are lying there? Or is it our mistake that we have just walked in blindly to a place where we don't know, we've not even switched on the light and we're just walking in the dark? Now, so who's, um, so who is the, uh, who is the one to be blamed? Of course, it is the person who just walked in, uh, you know, without even switching on the light and walking across like that and then is getting, uh, his feet is getting cut by the glass pieces, right? Similarly, when we don't know the Vedic scriptures, right? Uh, you know, what is that, um, uh, right? If we don't know, right? Ignorance is no excuse. If we don't know or we don't understand or we don't know to apply the Vedic scriptures in our life, then we work according to, whatever our mind tells, we will do all of that. Then what happens? Right? We will neither get success nor will we get peace of mind, nor will we get happiness. Hmm, na sukham na paramgatim. Also, we will not get the desired destination, right? Why? Because we are acting whimsically according to the mind. But what is prescribed in the Shastras, that is the way we have to lead our life, right? So as long as we are within the three modes of material nature, we have to follow the Vedic scriptures and then work in a way that, that will elevate us from our current position, right? We should work in such a way that we are not degraded from our current position, but rather we get elevated from our current position to a higher platform like that. Okay, let's move ahead, next number fourteen. Who's reading, next number fourteen? Namam karma, limpanthi, Suprema Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Dandakpranam, Madhaji. Namam limpanthi, namme karmeh phale spraha, iti maam yo abhi janati, karma bhirna sah badiyate. Sinanams, na, never, ma, me, karmaani, all kind of work, limpanthi, do affect, na, nor, me, my, karma phale, karma phale, infuential action, spraha, aspiration, iti, thus, ma, me, yah, one who, abhi janati, does know, karma bhi, by the reaction of such work, na, never, sah, he, badiyate, becomes entangled. Translation, there is no work that affects me, nor do I aspire for the fruits of action. One who understands this truth about me also does not become entangled in the fruitative reactions of work. Perpetual, as there are constitutional laws in the material world stating that the king can do no wrong or that the king is not subject to the state laws, similarly the Lord, although he is the creator of this material world, is not affected by the activities of the material world. He creates and remains aloof from the creation. Whereas the living entities are entangled in the fruitive results of material activities because of their propensity for lording it over material resources. The proprietor of an establishment is not responsible for the right and wrong activities of the workers, but the workers are themselves responsible. The living entities are engaged in their respective activities of sense gratification and these activities are not ordained by the Lord. For adva, for advancement of sense gratification, the living entities are engaged in the work of this world and they aspire to heavenly happiness after death. The Lord, full in him, being full in himself, has no attraction for so-called heavenly happiness. The heavenly demigods are only,
is engaged servants.
Madhaji, I'm not able to see the line. He is aloof, for example.
Heavenly demigods are only his engaged servants.
Heavenly demigods are only his engaged servants. The proprietor never desires the low-grade happiness such as the workers may desire. He is aloof from the material actions and reactions. For example, the rains are not responsible for different types of vegetation that appear on the earth, although without such rains, there is no possibility of vegetative growth. Vedik Smriti confirms this fact as follows. Nimitta matram evasho, srajyanam saragakarmaani, pradhana karani bhuta, yato vay srajay sektah. In the material creations, the Lord is only the supreme cause. The immediate cause is material nature by which the cosmic manifestation is made visible. The created beings are of many varieties such as the demigods, human beings and lower animals and all of them are subject to the reactions for, of their past good or bad activities. The Lord only gives them the proper facilities for such activities and the regulations of the modes of nature. But he is never responsible for their past and present activities. In the Vedanta Sutra two point one point thirty-four, it is confirmed, vaishyamaya naragrayana na sapakastavat. The Lord is never partial to any living entity. The living entity is responsible for its own acts. The Lord only gives him facilities through the agency of material nature, the external energy. Anyone who is fully convergent with all the intricacies of this law of karma of fruitive activities does not become affected by the results of his activities. In other words, the person who understands this transcendental nature of the Lord is an experienced man in Krishna consciousness and thus he is never subjected to the laws of karma. One who does not know the transcendental nature of the Lord and who thinks that the activities of the Lord are aimed at fruitive results as are the activities of the ordinary living entities certainly becomes entangled himself in fruitive reactions. But one who knows the supreme truth is a liberated soul fixed in Krishna consciousness. Hare Krishna, Dandakpranam.
Hare Krishna, thank you so much, yeah. So, uh, the laws of karma, it says, you know, the rule, the laws of God grind slow but sure, right? The, so the, 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 the action and the, uh, the reaction, right? Whether or not immediately it may be affected or it may, it may occur after, after lifetime, after lifetime, you know, or several births. Uh, that does not matter. However, uh, the, we will definitely, we'll get the reactions to the work that we have performed. Whether it is sinful activities, whether it is pious activities, does not really matter, right? What matters is that whatever we show, we shall reap. Hmm, whatever we do, we will definitely get the reactions of the particular activities either in this life or in the next life, right? And very beautifully Prabhupada says that living entity is responsible for his own actions, right? We cannot say that, okay, I'm not the only doer, the Lord is also the doer. So, you know, let the Lord desire, if the Lord desires, he will make me do devotional service, right? The Lord will never force us to do devotional service. That's why the Lord has given us this free will. We can use that free will either to engage in sense gratification or we can use our free will to engage in service. Depending on what the choices we make, we will get our next destination. That's all about it, that's the law of karma. Next number fifteen, Karpa Goli Madhaji, go ahead.
Sinanams, thank you, Madhaji, Dandakpranam. Ema, da, nyantava, knowing well, kritam was performed, karma was purva, purva, by past authorities, abi, indeed, mumuksh, mumukshapi, who attained liberation, guru just perform karma, prescribed duty, eva certainly, tasma therefore, thom, thom, you, purvaha, by predecessors, purva, taram. In ancient times, kritam as performed. Translation, um, by Prabhupada, Prabhupada Kise, all the liberated souls in ancient times acted with this understanding of my transcendental nature. Therefore, you should perform your duty following in their steps. Perpetual, there are two classes of men. Some of them are the full of polluted material things within their hearts and some of them are materially free. Krishna conscious is equally beneficial for both of these persons. Those who are full of dirty things can take to the line of Krishna consciousness for a gradual cleansing process, following the regulated principles of devotional service. Those who are already cleansed of the impurities may continue, continue to act in the same Krishna consciousness so that others may follow their exemplary activities and may be benefited. Foolish persons or neophytes in Krishna conscious often want to retire from services activities without having knowledge of Krishna consciousness. Arjuna decide to retire from activities on the battlefield was not approved by the Lord. One need only know how to act, to retire from, from the activities of Krishna consciousness and to sit aloof no, uh, and to sit aloof. Making a show of, making a show of Krishna consciousness is less important than actually engaging in the field of activities for the sake of Krishna. Arjuna is here, uh, is here, advised to act in Krishna consciousness, following the steps of the Lord's previous disciples such as his son god, Vivasvam and other mentioned here, here and before. The supreme lord knows all, supreme lord knows all his past activities a, as well as those of persons who acted in Krishna consciousness in the past. Therefore, he recommends the acts of Sangon, who learned this art from the Lord some millions of years before. All such students of Lord Krishna are mentioned here as past liberated person engaged in the discharge of duties allotted by Krishna. Thank you, Madhaji.
Thank you so much. Hare Krishna, Dandakpranam. So here, Natveva Ham Jatunasham, Natvam Nivijanadipa, Na Chevana Bhavishyama, Sarve Vayam Ataparam. So Krishna tells Arjuna, right? Both of us are people, right? Both of us are persons, right? I also take my, I've taken several births, you've also taken several births, but I know all of them, whereas you don't know all of them. Why? Because you've been put under illusion by my Maya, right? Right? One who is sincerely practicing devotional service by the grace of the Lord can cross over Maya or material energy. Whereas a kapata, right? Patita pavana, chetan mahapal, patita pavana, he'll deliver the most fallen, right? Patita, the most fallen. Whereas kapata pavan means those who try to take advantage of the existing situation, not surrendering to the Lord, but simply showing off, they are wearing a kanti, wearing a doti kurta, wearing a saree and, you know, trying to show off that I am also chanting, right? Whereas there is no actual chanting that is happening. There is no purification of the heart that is happening, right? Such, such utilized, such activities also will be useful because simply just to show, like Ajamil chanted Narayan, calling out to his son, but yet he benefited. So similarly, whatever state of mind we chant Hare Krishna, it's going to benefit us. But how much more it will benefit us if we are, if you are doing it as devotional service to the supreme personality of Godhead like that? Okay, so with this, we will end our Bhagavad Gita session today. Let us quickly go to our, uh, Nectar of Instruction, we are on verse number eleven. Hare Krishna. So we are on Nectar of Instruction, verse number seven. So we were talking yesterday, right? What does it say? It's somebody who suffering from jaundice does not have taste for sugar candy or sugar cane juice. Yet, that is the, um, uh, okay, hmm, yet that is the cure for jaundice. Similarly, man, one has to take that particular medicine in order to cure oneself of jaundice. Similarly, one has to, uh, take this medicine of Hare Krishna Mahamanta. Nardhamdasta Akura singing, right? Enchi au shadi Maya, nasi baro lagi, right? This is an, this is an au shada, this is a medicine, uh, which is actually going to cure us from the disease of material existence. Enchi au shadi Maya, nasi baro lagi. Hari nama mahamanta, laav tumi magi. So please, uh, ask for the Mahamanta, which is the real medicine, right? Laav tumi magi, beg for it and chant the Hare Krishna Mahamanta because that is going to, uh, cure the real disease, hmm, which is there in the heart of the living entities, right? And then you also saw Abhidya, what is Abhidya? And we also saw Ahankara, right? Vidya plus Ahankar, it leads to, it leads to, um, uh, you know, Avagyan, right? Avagyan means no knowledge, right? Whereas Vinaya plus Gyan will lead to Bigyan, right? Bigyan, if one has Bigyan, then what is it? Then one has the wisdom to practice the principles of devotional service in their life. Whereas if one does not have, um, Bigyan, but rather has Avagyan, that means what? Ahankar is there thinking, I have learned everything, I know everything, I, I, I. And then what happens? He's still under the platform of ignorance or he's still under the platform of passion. Because the more I is there means to that extent we are very passionate about getting the credit for whatever we do or say. And the more they are ignorant, uh, then we don't even want to understand who is the Lord, what are we supposed to do? And why are we doing certain things? We just do niyama graha, we'll just follow the rules and regulations but without understanding the purpose of it, right? Alright, so let's continue reading, um, in Nectar of Instruction, we were there, the real disease is in the heart. That means what? Uh, we were talking about chetho darpana margenum. The chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamanta cleanses the heart of all of the lust, anger, greed, pride and pride, uh, pride, envy and illusion. Hmm, and how do we extinguish, uh, this, uh, the fire of mental existence is there in our heart? Shreyakayravachandrikaavitaram. The cooling breeze, the cooling breeze of the moon, uh, rises in the heart and extend, removes all of this fire of mental existence and brings about this coolness in our heart. And what is that? That is the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamanta. Yes, Madhaji, go ahead, Sindhu Madhaji, go ahead. The real disease is in the heart from there.
Hare Krishna, Hare Bhosila Prabhupada Kirjay. The real disease in the heart, if the mind is cleansed, however, if consciousness is cleansed, a person cannot be harmed by the material disease. To cleanse the mind,
To cleanse the mind and heart?
Yeah. Cleanse the mind and the heart from all the misconceptions, one should take to this chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamanta. This is both easy and beneficial. By chanting the holy name of the Lord, one is immediately freed from the blazing fire of material existence. There are three stages in chanting the holy name of the Lord, the offensive stage, the stage of lessening offenses and the pure stage. When a neophyte takes to the chanting of the Hare Krishna mantra, he generally commits many offenses. There are ten basic offenses and if the devotee avoids these, he can glimpse the next stage which is situated between offensive chanting and pure chanting. When one attains the pure stage, he is immediately liberated. This is called Bhava Mahadavagni Nirvapanam. As soon as one is liberated from the blazing fire of material existence, he can relish the taste of transcendental life. The conclusion is that in order to get freed from the material disease, one must take to the chanting of the Hare Krishna mantra. The Krishna consciousness movement is especially meant for creating an atmosphere in which people can take to the chanting of the Hare Krishna mantra. One must begin with faith and when this faith is increased by chanting, a person can become a member of the society. We are sending Shankirtana parties all over the world and they are experiencing that even in the remotest part of the world where there is no knowledge of Krishna, the Hare Krishna Mahamanta attracts thousands of men to our camp. In some areas, people begin to imitate the devotees by shaving their heads and chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamanta only a few days after hearing the mantra. This may be imitative, but imitation of a good thing is desired. Some imitators gradually become interested in being initiated by the spiritual master and offer themselves for initiation. If one is sincere, is initiated and this stage is called Bhajana Kriya. One then actually engages in the service of the Lord by regularly chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamanta sixteen rounds daily and from refraining from illicit sex, intoxicants, meat eating and gambling. By Bhajana Kriya, one attains freedom from the contamination of materialistic life. He no longer goes to a restaurant or hotel to taste so-called palatable dishes made with meat and audience, nor does he care to smoke or drink tea or coffee. He not only restrains from illicit sex but avoids sex life entirely, nor is, uh, nor is he interested in wasting his time in speculating or gambling. In this way, it is to be understood that one is becoming cleansed of unwanted things, anartha nibriti. The word anartha refers to unwanted things. Anartas are vanquished when one becomes attached to the Krishna conscious movement.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Madhaji. Right? So here chanting of the glory of chanting Hare Krishna Mahamanta is given, right? Shraddha, we discussed this in detail actually yesterday, so we will not discuss in detail. But, uh, but quickly to understand the twelve stages, now we have the, sorry, nine stages. That is, we have Shraddha and then we engage in Sadhusanga and then we do chanting Harabhanakriya and then all the anartas in the hearts get removed which is anartha nirvriti, unwanted things. Anartha means unwanted things, Prabhupada translates it like that, right? And then what happens, anartha nirvriti, when anartas get removed, then one becomes And then what happens, anartha nirvriti, when anartas get removed, then one becomes firm, gets firm faith in chanting Hare Krishna. That is, that is one, one attains the stage of nishtha, right? Uh, so when one attains the stage of nishtha, then what happens? Uh, then one gets taste, which is ruchi and then asakti and then bhava and then finally it is prema, right? So um, so quickly, if you want to advance in Krishna consciousness, what do we have to do? Simply chant Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, hare re, hare Rama, hare Rama, Rama Rama, hare hare. And then they also say, Prabhupada saying, imitative chanting is also desired, right? That is in the initial stages, hmm, initial stages, what happens? Like when we go on Hari Nam Shankirtan, when you go on book distribution, somebody is chanting, oh, the Hare Krishnas have come, right? That means what? If somebody is, you know, indirectly chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, parihasyam, that means if somebody is teasing, uh, you know, the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, oh, they have come again, now they want us to, now they will want to, want us to chant Hare Krishna, they want us to take some books. Like that, when they are saying what happens, that is also chanting of Hare Krishna Mahamantra, right? In one, in one occasion, Prabhupada, in the western world, there was an article, you know, it was completely blaspheming the Hare Krishna movement. And then it was saying, this Hare Krishna movement founder, Shri La Prabhupada, the Swami is doing like this, like this, you know, completely blasphemous. But so many times they have written Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna like that. And then Prabhupada said, okay, count how many times they have written Hare Krishna in the entire article, right? So the name of Krishna has become popular, never mind, they have written some, something blasphemous, that's okay. As long as Krishna is becoming popularized, you are on the right path like that, right? So and in some occasion, like you know, someone was asking, you know, how to, you know, evaluate the, you know, Bhakti Shastri papers also, right? Someone said, you know, how to, and that was, that time also, there was guidance given that as many times as Hare Krishna is there, in the answer, to that extent, we can give them marks also like that, right? Of course, it does not really happen like that, but the point is, the nama, the nama itself is so pure, hmm, that one need not understand the complete depths of chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra to attain the benefit, right? Uh, like Prabhupada gives example, that, you know, generally we go to the doctor, we get a medicine, right? I, I, I take the thyroid medicine, right? I just, I just pop a pill, right? I don't know what that pill is going to do, how it is going to help me reduce my thyroid, how is it going to help me? I take some homeopathy medicine, I don't know how the medicine is going to work. But if I just follow the prescription given by the doctor, automatically I will get cured of the disease. Similarly, the medicine of Hare Krishna Mahamantra is given to us, right? We simply need to take the medicine, we don't need to understand how the Mahamantra is working on us, how it is purifying our hearts, all that depths unnecessary analysis will lead to paralysis, right? We don't have to go into unnecessary analysis, we just believe and trust that this Hare Krishna Mahamantra is going to purify me and help me attain the desired success, which is Krishna prema, hmm, so that is all we need to do. But we need to follow the prescription very, very sincerely, like how we do of normal medicines like that. Okay, let's move forward, who else is wanting to read? Okay, Shobha Mathaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Dharapramathaji, Shri La Prabhupada Kijay. When a person is relieved from unwanted things, he becomes fixed in executing his Krishna activities. Indeed, he becomes attached to such activities and experiences ecstasy in executing devotion service. This is called bhava, the preliminary awakening of dormant love of Godhead. Thus, the conditioned soul becomes free from material existence and loses interest in the bodily conception of life, including material opulence, material knowledge and material attraction of all variety. At such a time, one can understand who the supreme personality of Godhead is and what is Maya is. Although Maya may be present, it cannot disturb a devotee once he attends the bhava stage. This is because the devotee can see the real position of Maya. Maya becomes forgetfulness of Krishna, unforgiveness of Krishna and Krishna consciousness stands side by side like, like light and shadow. If one remains in shadow, he cannot enjoy the facilities offered by light. And if one remains in light, he cannot be disturbed by the darkness of shadow. By taking to Krishna consciousness, one gradually becomes liberated and remains in light. Indeed, he does not even touch the darkness, as confirmed in the Saitanya Charitamritam Madhylila, twenty second chapter, thirty first sloka. Krishna surya sama Maya haya antakara, yaha Krishna taha nahi Maya ra adikara. Krishna is compared to sunshine and Maya is compared to darkness. Wherever there is sunshine, there cannot be darkness. As soon as one takes to Krishna consciousness, the darkness of illusion, the influence of the external energy will immediately vanish. Shri La Prabhupada Kijay, thank you, Mathaji, Hare Krishna.
Thank you, thank you, Mathaji. Right? Krishna surya sama, very, very famous verse, right? Krishna surya sama, Krishna is like the sun, Maya haya andakar, Maya is like the darkness, right? Uh, then generally in the night, what happens? You know, there is, there is a full darkness, we are not able to see also what is happening outside. But slowly, slowly in the morning, five thirty, six o'clock, then the sun rises, then we are able to see everything as it is, right? Maya haya andakar, so Maya is darkness and Krishna is sun. Just as when the sun rises, everything of darkness gets, gets extinguished and one is able to see things as they are. Similarly, hmm, um, yaha Krishna taha nahi hai Maya adikar. So wherever there is Krishna or chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra or the presence of devotees who are capable of enlightening us and, and, and capable of transcending us from this tamoguna, right? You should understand that there is no darkness, right? Hmm, Maya ra adikar, that Maya is compared to darkness, right? Maya is illusion, we will not be, will not be influenced by the, by the illusions of Maya. If you are already, always chanting Hare Krishna, you are always in the association of devotees because that, that serves as a shield for us uh to actually cross over the, uh, the material existence or cross over the tamo andakupam, they say, right? This ocean of material existence. Okay, let's move forward, text number eight. Okay, hold read, NOI eight. So this is a very, very important verse, okay? We will discuss this very in detail because this is upadesha saaram, what is the essence of all instructions, right? From the ninth verse, it will become glories of Radha Kond, you know, how one should always want to reside in Radha Kond and what is actually meant by that and all that. So nine, ten, eleven, we will quickly go through because it is very, very high level, at least I will not be able to discuss in detail. But this verse, we will discuss in detail. Okay, synonyms, so we'll read, Navkishori Mathaji, go ahead. Synonyms, what were translation by Prabhupada? Tat of Lord, right? Yes, Prabhupada, go ahead.
Dharapramathaji, the.
Read the synonyms, Math.
The essence of all advice is that one should utilize.
Please read the synonyms, Hare Bol, am I audible?
Oh, synonym, okay.
Of Lord Krishna, nama, the holy name, rupa, form.
Name, rupa, form, charita, the character, pastimes and so on. Sa kirtana, in discussing or chanting nicely, anush smrityaaha and in remembering, hmm, remembering kramenu, gradually, gradually rasana, the tongue, manasi and one's mind, niyoja, engaging tishtham, residing vrajay, in vrajya. Uh, tat, tat, to Lord Krishna, Krishna, anuragi attached, jnana, jana, jana persons, anugnani, anugami, following column, type, naite, should utilize, should utilize, utilize, achilam, pool, iti, does, upadesha of advice of instruction, sarandh, essence. In translation by Shri La Prabhupada. The essence of all advice is that one should utilize one's full time twenty-four hours a day in chanting and remembering the Lord's divine name, transcendental form qualities and eternal pastimes, thereby gradually engaging one's tongue and mind. In this way, one should reside in vrajya, goloka vrindavan dhamma and serve Krishna under the guidance of devotees. One should follow in the footsteps of the Lord below devotees who are deeply attached in his devotion service. Perpetual by Shri La Prabhupada, Shri La Prabhupada Kijay, since the uh, since the mind may be one's enemy or one's friend, one has to train the mind to become, to become his friend. The Krishna consciousness movement is especially meant for training the mind to be always engaged in Krishna's business. The mind contains hundreds and thousands of impressions, not only of this life but also of many, many lives of the past. This impression sometimes come in contact with one another and produce contradictory pictures. In this way, the mind functions can be, can become dangerous for a conditioned soul. Students of psychology are aware of the mind's various psychological dangers in Bhagavad Gita eight point six. It is said, yam yam, yam yam, vapi, smaram, buvam. Mathaji, can you sing please? Thank you, Mathaji. Whatever state of being one, remember when he quits his body, that state he will attain without fail. At the time of death, the mind and intelligence of a living entity create the subtle form of a certain type of body for the new life. If the mind suddenly thinks of something not very cognizant, one has to take a corresponding birth, corresponding birth in the next life. On this other hand, if one, one think, one can think of Krishna at the time of death, he can be transferred to the spiritual world, goloka vrindavan. The process of transmigration is very subtle. Therefore, Shri La Rupa Goswami advises devotees to train their mind in order, order that they will, they will be unable to remember anything uh, other than Krishna. Similarly, the tongue should be trained to speak only of Krishna and to taste only Krishna prasad. Shri La Rupa Goswami, further advice, advice is, hmm, tishtham, tishtham vrajay. One should live to, live in vridavna or any part of vrajabumi, vrajabumi or the land of vridavna. He is suggested to, is supposed to be eighty, eighty-four kroshas in the, in area. One Krishna, one Krishna, sorry, one krosha equals to square my, when one makes vridavna as a resident, um, he should take care of an advanced devotee there. In this, this way, one should always think of Krishna and his pastime. This is further, uh, this is further, uh, I'll, I'll look at. Palu Sidheta, uh, by Shri La Rupa Goswami in the Bhakti Rasa Misindu, one point, two point, two ninety four.
A devotee should always.
Uh, in, uh, sorry.
Yeah, Mathaji, a devotee should reside in the transcendental realm of vrajya.
Okay, hmm, devotee should always reside in the transcendental realm of vrajya and always engage in a Krishna, uh, Krishna, always engage in a Krishna.
Smaran, jana, chaasi, presta.
Uh, asya, uh, pre, presum. The remembrance of Shri Krishna and his below, then he is below the associate by following in, uh, in the foot shape of such assets, by entering under their eternal guidance, one can acquire or intense desire to serve the supreme personality of Godhead. Again, Shri La Rupa Goswami stated in Bhakti Rasa Misindu, one point, two point, two ninety five. Thank you. In the transcendental realm of vrajya, vrajabumi, one should serve the supreme personality of Godhead, Shri Krishna. Um, dealing with, similar to that of his associate and one should place himself under the direct guidance of a particular associate of Krishna and should follow in his. Uh, this method is applicable both in, um, in the stage of sadhana. Spiritual practices educated while in the stage of bondage and in the stage of sadhana, god realization. When one, one is, one is a Siddha purusa or spiritual perfect soul.
Thank you. Hare Bol. So here, important, two, three points, very, very essential here. We have to remember Krishna twenty-four hours of the day, right? Why? Because whatever we remember during our entire life, that is what we will remember at the time of death. Right? So whatever state we remember at the time of death, that state will attain without fail. If you remember Krishna at the time of death, you will be able to go back to the Lord's abode, right? And that also, um, if we are, I, how will we be able to remember Krishna at the time of death? If you have remembered Krishna throughout our life, when we were, when we were healthy, when we are healthy currently, right? When we engage the tongue and talking about the Lord, when we engage our eyes and seeing the beautiful form of the Lord, right? Uh, like our Ambarish Maharaj, right? Uh, so he engaged all of his senses in the service of the supreme personality of Godhead, right? Um, mind and mind in terms of thinking of the Lord, eyes and seeing the form of the Lord, ears and hearing the glories of the Lord, mouth and speaking the glories of the Lord, like this, when you are always remembering Krishna, then you are always remaining in vridavandam. Although physically maybe we are in Bombay or Dubai or United States or wherever we are, right? We are always situated in vridavna consciousness like that, right? So in this way, one should always make vridavna one's residence, right? But it is also said that one should not stay in vridavna more than three days. Even when one goes to vridavna dam, even for three days, one has to always be in the association of devotees. Hmm, only then one should, one should step into vridavna dam. Otherwise, if we go to vridavna dam and spend time like we normally do for, you know, in our, in Bombay and other places, right? Engaging in, you know, just two hours of chanting Hare Krishna, the rest of the time, you know, we, we work for what is, uh, you know, what, what is our swadharma, right? Generally, we, you know, talk to people, eat, whatever we want, we do. All that if we do in vrajadham, then we will, uh, you know, the more time we spend in the dam like that, the more we will deteriorate in our devotional service. That is why in vridavna, we should, we should, actual physical presence in vridavna should be only for maximum three to five days and that too in the association of devotees and that too, you know, one should visit the various ilas talis of the Lord and hear about the ilas talis from a pure devotee of the Lord. And that is the way one can always be vridavna conscious and one can be vridavna conscious, conscious even when one is not in the dam. Now, that is by placing oneself under the direct guidance of a devotee guru, who actually always enables us to remember Krishna and never forget Krishna. When we are remembering Krishna, we are in vridavna dam. When you are forgetting Krishna, that means we are in the material world, right? And this method of remembrance of Krishna is applicable both at the stage of sadhana and sadhya. What is sadhana? Sadhana means I'm doing some devotional practices, although I don't have a taste, although I don't feel like doing it. Even then, I'm doing it because my seniors have told me that it is good for me to develop love for the Lord. But what is sadhya? Sadhya means I'm already in the state of God realization, I already know Krishna as a Lord. I'm already having spontaneous attraction towards the Lord, I want to do devotional service. Even then, I will be chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra, but now I'm not bothered about rules and regulations. Now I'm doing it because I love doing it, right? Like that. Okay, let's move forward. Who wants to read? Okay, I'll just read, I thought Rohini Mathaji, you want to read? Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Shri La Bhakti Siddhanta Saraswati Thakur has commented as follows, follows upon this verse. One who has not yet developed interest in Krishna consciousness should give up all material motives and train his mind by following the progressive regulated principles, namely chanting and remembering Krishna and his name, form, quality, pastimes and so forth. In this way, after developing a taste for such things, one should try to live in vridavna and pass his time constantly remembering Krishna's name, fill in pastimes and qualities under the direction and protection of an expert devotee. This is the sum and substance of all instruction regarding the cultivation of devotional service. In the neophyte stage, one should always engage in hearing Krishna kata. This is called Sravana Dasa.
Sravana Dasa.
Yeah, Sravana Dasa, the stage of hearing. By constantly hearing the transcendental holy name of Krishna and hearing of his transcendental form, qualities and pastimes, one can attain to the stage of acceptance. qualities and pastimes one can attain to the stage of acceptance called Varanadasa when one attains this stage he becomes attached to the hearing of Krishna kata when one is able to chant in ecstasy he against he attains the stage of Marana vasta the stage of remembering recollection absorption meditation constant remembrance and trance are the five items of progressive Krishna Marana at first remembrance of Krishna may be interrupted at intervals but later remembrance proceeds uninterrupted when will this happen Madhaji when remembrance is uninterrupted it becomes concentrated and is called meditation when meditation expands and becomes constant it is called anussmriti by uninterrupted and unceasing anussmriti one enters the stage of samadhi a spiritual trance after smarana dasa all samadhi has fully developed the soul comes to understand his original constitutional position at that time he can perfectly and clearly understand his eternal relationship with Krishna this is called sambhathi dasa the perfection of life Chaitanya Charitamritadvises those who are neophytes to give all kinds of motivated desires and simply engage in the regulated devotional service of the Lord according to the directions of scripture in this way a neophyte can gradually develop attachment for Krishna's name fame form qualities and so forth when one has developed such attachment he can spontaneously serve the lotus feet of Krishna even without following the regulated principles this stage is called ragabhakti devotional service in spontaneous love at that stage the devotee can follow in the footsteps of one of the eternal associates of Krishna in Vrindavan this is called raganuga bhakti raganuga bhakti or spontaneous devotional service can be executed in this shanta rasa when one aspires to be like Krishna's cows or stick or flute in the hand of Krishna or the flowers around Krishna's neck in the dasya rasa one follows in the footsteps of servants like chitraka patraka and raktaka raktaka in the friendly sakha rasa one can become a friend like baladeva shridama or sudama in the vatsalya rasa characterized by parental affection one can become nanda maharaja and yashoda and in the madhurya rasa characterized by conjugal love one can become like shrimati radharani or lady prince such as lalita and her serving maid manjeries like rupa and rati this is the essence of all instructions in the matter of devotional service Hari Bol
Hare Krishna thank you Madhaji right so what is common in all the five rasa's whether it is uh whether it is dasya sakya vatsalya or madhurya right what is the essential aspect of all rasa's it is seva right whether one is uh you know sadhana bhakti or whether whether one it is in raganuga bhakti right seva is an essential aspect right it is only that in ragabhakti automatically that spontaneous desire to serve the lord arises in our heart and even when we have this raganuga bhakti for the lord we still serve under the the particular gurus who are the uh who are the um who are representing that particular rasa in the spiritual world like for example here dasya rasa one follows the footsteps of chitraka patraka raktaka sakya rasa one follows baladev shridama or sudama vatsalya rasa of course one follows maharaja uh you know nanda maharaja and yashoda maya and madhurya rasa one follows nimuthi radharani lalita devi vishaka devi eh champaklata chitra tunga vidya like all of those ashtrashakis and also the manjeries who are serving the 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 gopis and who are in turn serving vishri radha and Krishna hmm so in this way whether one is a neophyte or one is in the deepest advanced stage of spiritual life one always needs guidance in the practice of devotional service right that's why we always say bhakti lata it's a creeper is always dependent hmm on uh the association otherwise the mind can bring one down at any stage in time right and then Prabhupada very beautifully describes the various stages hmm what is that Sravanadasa means that is the starting point so it starts with Sravanadasa Sravanadasa means just hearing about the lord and then what happens varanadasa that means one accepts the lord and his pastimes are transcendental right and one should come to accept that that's varanadasa and then smaranavasta right Sravanakirtana smaranasmarana that is the most essential principle is to remember the lord all the time smarthabhyasa thatam vishnor vismartabhyona jatochit whatever rules and regulations we are following ultimately it should enable us to always remember Krishna never forget Krishna so Krishna smaranam right that is that is what is most, most important and that Krishna smaranam meditating upon the nama rupa guna leel of the lord that is only actual meditation hmm not the meditation that we perform to acquire Siddhis like uh you know becoming bigger than the biggest smaller than the smallest all that will die with the body this is not worth remembering right but anussmriti that means when one constantly engaged in remembrance of the lord in a favorable way by following the respective spiritual master then that is called smaranadasa or samadhi samadhi means what one is always remembering by Krishna and then finally one understands his eternal relationship with Krishna what is that eternal relationship that's called sambhathi dasa sambhathi means wealth what is the real wealth the real wealth is getting an opportunity to serve guru and gauranga that is real wealth hmm and that that wealth one can be can be obtained uh simply by the blessings of guru simply by the blessings of those whom we serve in order to please guru and gauranga like that so with this we come to an end of this verse number eight so tomorrow we will tomorrow's auspicious occasion of ekadashi so tomorrow we will start verse number nine hmm it's a it's a small verse which is actually talking about uh you know the hierarchy right matura Vrindavan and then goardhan and then radakund talking about the various uh the importance of the various places within uh the vrajamandal there are vrajamandal right so the entire thing comprised of Goloka Matura and Vrindavan right you see that Goloka Vrinda Goloka chart and we will see all of these dams right and in the innermost petal is the innermost flower is the uh you know these the Goloka Vrindavan dam where Radhan Krishna is served by the ashtrashakis outside that is uh dwarka outside that is matura and then outside that is vaikunta like that there is hierarchy so that is what we will we will study tomorrow uh we will try to do verse number nine tomorrow and then tomorrow's ekadashi so we will be between chapter eight uh verses translations and a little bit of discussion on chapter number eight of Bhagavad Gita so we will be posting the time for tomorrow's discussion so I would request devotees to dedicate about an hour and a half to two tomorrow being ekadashi na tidi and then we will and tomorrow is also Ishwar Puris Appearance Day who is the father of Chetan Mahaprabhu right and then uh sorry spiritual master of Chetan Mahaprabhu Ishwar Puris hmm and then uh we have the appearance of Chetan Mahaprabhu himself coming up on the twenty fifth right from tomorrow we will be starting the study of important verses um glorifying gauranga Mahaprabhu for which you opened a separate group called festival preparing our consciousness advocate devotees to join that group so that from tomorrow we will be posting like every day we will try to study one verse or we will we will try to study one verse every three days according to uh you know the response how many devotees are able to write and in this way we will study easily about uh at least eight uh five to eight verses uh we will be memorizing it and then we will also understand the translation of it uh and in this way we will understand the glory of Chetan Mahaprabhu okay so with this we will end our session today Vitai gaurapremanande Hari Hari Bol Hare Krishna so if anyone has any queries or any realizations we can they can share that now otherwise we can quickly do harinam sankirtan and then we will end in Kaliuga can anyone come to smaranavasta even varanaavasta is difficult right by mercy of guru and gauranga ye etamam prapadyante we studied that verse right to the extent we are surrendered we will uh we will attract the mercy of the lord and his devotees to the extent we serve devotees we attract their mercy by their blessings we will be able to attain smaranavasta that means smaranavasta means always remembering the lord like Pralad Maharaj always he was remembering the lord whatever condition he was in fact put into difficulty by his own father who is his protector and even then he was always remembering the lord so how much we are determined to remember the lord and we can only remember the lord by the lord's mercy but what we can do is only endeavor and desire that oh lord in whatever situation let me chant your holy names and remember you in this way right in Kaliuga remembrance is by chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra right otherwise uh you know in the mind is not trustworthy we cannot trust the mind that you know I I will just remember the lord right it is by engaging the senses we remember the lord chanting Hare Krishna hearing Hare Krishna Mahamantra in that way we will remember the lord okay Madhaji I am in finance department this is our year end okay okay it's a big note what is this so I am busy I couldn't join class properly in the office no problem please check it out on YouTube Madhaji thank you for joining in Hare Krishna Kaligabadi Devavana Hare Krishna Mahamantra Kijay Kaligabadi Devavana Harinam Sankirtan Mahayagnaki Jai Nantakoti Vaishnavavrindaki Jai Samyed Bhaktavrindaki Jai All Glories to Semile Devotees Hare Krishna all glory to Semile Devotees Hare Krishna all Glories to Semile Devotees Hare Krishna all glories all glories all glories to Shishi Guru and Sri gauranga Shilpa Prabhupada Shilpa Gurudev Kijay Nitaigora Premanande Hari Hari Bol alright so we will meet you all tomorrow morning on ekadashi for chanting at five o'clock and then we will meet for our extended session of one and a half to two hours uh tomorrow for ekadashi and then we will do uh Nectar Instruction also we will do verse number nine uh and then we will do Bhagavad Gita chapter number eight right uh and then we will also speak something about Ishwar Puris who is the spiritual master of Chetan Mahaprabhu thank you all very much for joining in Jagat Gurushila Prabhupada Shilpa Gurdev Kijay Grant Raj Bhagavad Gita Kijay Grant Raj Nectar of Instruction Kijay Ananta Koti Vaishnavavrindaki Jai Nitaigora Premanande Hari Hari Bol